It is 7:05. I will call the night's meeting of the Committee of the Whole to Order. The first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Arata Frata.
Here.
Alder Gerhart is delayed. Alder Herbst. Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado is absent with excuse, as is Alder Strassman. Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
Excellent. We have a quorum and able to conduct business. Next item is the approval of minutes of the July 26th meeting. We could use a motion. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is public appearances for non-agenda items. It doesn't seem to be anybody here except staff people, so we will move on to item number 6A, which is discussion about traffic safety, enforcement, the neighborhood traffic management process, the guidelines we have and whatnot. And so that's going to come from city engineering and the police department. Which of you would like to start?
Screen here. All right. So I'm Ross Kaler, city transportation engineer, and...
Lieutenant Ned Hartwick with the police department.
So this is going to start a video, just to kind of start us off, about speed perception on neighborhood streets. So just try to ask, it'll show you kind of the speed that the car is actually moving, and then it will invite you to guess at the speed on a final run. So that just kind of ties into the rest of our presentation about perceived versus actual speed and what we can do to help with that actual speed. So in this short presentation, we'll go through our current traffic management process, what we do now, what Ned and I propose to do going forward for traffic calming, and how we'll strive to make more data-driven decisions in the future. So our current traffic management process, it goes through something called the Neighborhood Traffic Management Process, the NTMP. And through that, things have to come to the city as a complaint. Right now, it has to be resident-driven. The residents have to fill out a community action request, which is a petition with a certain amount of signatures. Then the city does a traffic study, and then based on the results of that traffic study, we take an action, whether it's education, engineering, or enforcement. So some of the issues with our current traffic management process is it is only focused on residential areas. You cannot do a traffic calming request for an area that doesn't have residents, like a commercial area of the city. There's multiple routes for incoming complaints. Ned can talk a little bit about how those come into the various places in the city.
So we, I think, in the public's mind, are responsible for setting speed limits, making decisions regarding speed limits. And so I think by that thought, we get a lot of complaints directed towards us about changing speed limits. People also call us just about repeat speeders. We have set up over the years, we have tried to capture those in a number of different ways, but we still get a fair number of calls that come in directly to dispatch, which become harder to track. Over the years, with the use of the website, we have received quite a few complaints that come in through our website. But then throughout the city, those complaints come into Public Works, both via phone and via the website. And then, of course, you all have received probably a number of traffic-related concerns. So one of the challenges that we have looked at over the years is how do we collect those and put those into one bucket for assessment and tracking? And that's a process that, with the previous transportation engineer, I think we're moving in the right direction and trying to continue that.
So even though complaints can come in all those different ways, a resident has to start off with that community action request. So right now, no matter who hears about it, that's the way we have to direct them in order to use funds in this bucket. So I can answer questions at the end of it, if that's all right.
Point up there I don't like, but go ahead.
So right now, in our process, speed is a much larger factor than street design or non-standard pedestrian crossings or anything like that. We also have a long Phase 1 before we get to any permanent solutions. Everything is temporary until we decide that those temporary measures are not working. We call out a limited number of engineering solutions. There's a lot of stuff we could do that is just not included in our current process. And then enforcement is one of the first tools in this toolbox that is called out in the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. So Ned will talk more about enforcement.
So again, focusing on the belief that a lot of folks operate under, that we are responsible for all things related to traffic. And the expectation when we get a complaint is that folks like to see a police car out in front of their home or the stretch that they believe there are speeders on. And as we're all aware, resource availability is one of our key challenges in getting folks and officers into the neighborhoods where we are typically receiving these complaints. Over the years, being a part of traffic management within the city and attending a number of meetings, some initiated by council members here, we've discussed some of the challenges related to traffic enforcement and really having a presence. And the map over here to the left is a map of traffic crashes from no injury to fatalities mapped out over the last 10 years in the city. And so when neighbors or neighborhoods, I should say, complain about speeding on a particular road, and we talk about the number of officers we have working at any given time, and framed around the context that our primary purpose of traffic enforcement is to gain compliance, to reduce traffic crashes, and improve traffic safety. I ask residents to take a look at this map and see where the majority of our traffic crashes are occurring, and if they were playing supervisor for the day, where would they deploy resources to reduce traffic crashes? So you can see, it's not really any big surprise that our traffic crashes, the majority of our traffic crashes, occur in our busiest roads, Fish Hatchery Road, McKee Road, and Verona Road. And those are also where a number of our injury crashes are occurring. So we talk through deploying resources and getting those officers into areas to hopefully reduce traffic crashes and reduce injuries. The other component of enforcement is that for it to really be impactful is that we have to have a sustained presence. And so when we deploy officers, we don't have a dedicated traffic team. When we deploy officers to a neighborhood, it is sometimes very hard to keep them there for any sustained period of time. We all know that over time, we've encountered areas where there's a rather sustained police presence, or you always know that there's a high likelihood that a police officer might be in a neighborhood. And you might change your driving behavior for a short period of time, but eventually, after you drive past that police officer for that area where the police officer was for a couple of days and they're not there, your behavior changes again. And so the studies indicate that for enforcement to really have desired impacts, that that presence has to be almost 20, not 24/7, but, you know, every day of the week. And that's a challenge for us. The other issue that we encounter is the desirability of using traffic enforcement as a way of making our roads safer. A story that I'll tell time and time again here related to neighborhood traffic concerns, is I attended a neighborhood meeting and heard concerns about traffic speeding in their neighborhood. And within, it may have been the next night, it was in the couple of days after the meeting, stop a speeder going 12 miles an hour over the speed limit, and it's the president of the Neighborhood Association that was talking about speeding. And so when we talk about who speeds in neighborhoods, often it's the residents that live in those neighborhoods. So people want other people to slow down, but they may not necessarily always be slowing down themselves. And then the question comes in as it relates to this use of resources, is do we want the police department being solely responsible for slowing folks down through traffic enforcement? Enforcement certainly is a component. It is one of the three components of education, engineering, and enforcement for traffic safety, but it is something that needs to be balanced in this overall program.
So like I mentioned earlier, we're proposing some changes to our traffic management process to improve our outcomes. Instead of going through that resident complaint and then community action request process, I think a better flow chart would be to go from, we have a problem, and then we go into studying that issue with a traffic study, much the same way we already do. And then we take action on that. It can kind of remove an unnecessary step of that complaint having to come from a resident, and it will open up our process to a lot of other roads in the city that could also use traffic calming. So these are some of our proposed changes that address those issues that I listed earlier. We want to open this up to all local roads, not just residential streets. This wouldn't include the roads like McKee and Verona Road and much of Fish Hatchery Road. Those really need larger projects to address issues there. We want to make this process simpler and clearer for our residents. Right now, it's really not equitable for the whole community. It's really easy for someone who knows how City Hall works to call an elected official. You guys direct them to the right place, but there's a lot of people in Fitchburg that may not know that entire process.
And just to add to Ross's comments there, I can tell you, on at least a couple of occasions in looking at neighborhood traffic concerns, sitting in areas where we tend to receive complaints, and then that same night or the next day, going into other parts of the city and doing traffic enforcement or traffic monitoring and noticing a significant issue that seemed to be much more noticeable than the neighborhoods where we're receiving complaints. And in our time in those neighborhoods, going on foot patrol and asking residents or property managers what their concerns are, hearing that speeding is a concern, and then that challenge being explaining to them this process of addressing it. So this is one of the proposed improvements of allowing it to be a little bit more equitable.
Yeah, so one way we can make this process more equitable is allowing someone besides a resident to start this process. If staff can start this based on something that we see and notice, then we can maybe direct those resources in a more equitable way. Part of making it more clear for residents is updating our website and making that easier to navigate, because right now, the NTMP is buried several layers deep in the Public Works website. And then getting into the actual process, we want to take speed, pedestrian issues, and the actual design of the street into account more equally. One thing with the current plan is that there's a high-speed barrier for entry. A road has to be over 35 miles an hour in the 85th percentile speed to even get into this process.
And one of the other components about messaging, again, after years of folks directing questions to the police department, there's a common belief, I think a lot of times, where it comes in that you can solve a traffic problem by putting up a stop sign or taking other actions. And so one of the components of the improved messaging on the website would be a little bit more background on common solutions or approaches to traffic calming, and hopefully potentially answer and reduce some of the questions or requests that Ross or the police department may receive.
So this is some data that we get. This is from Osmondson at the intersection of Osmondson and Woods Edge. We just completed this study in response to a community action request that I think Alder Jetser was semi-involved in. This is from August 2023. You can see we get a lot of data when we do a traffic study, and I'll go more into that coming up. So right now, we have to meet all of these Phase 1 criteria that you see on the screen. We have to have an annual daily traffic of greater than 200 vehicles per day. Osmondson far surpasses that with 1,222 vehicles per day. We need a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less. 25 miles an hour is the speed limit on Osmondson. And we need a functional classification of a local or minor collector street, and Osmondson is a local street. Then, so say we go through Phase 1. Those treatments are things like putting up speedboards, having neighborhood meetings, sending out flyers to educate residents on traffic safety in their neighborhood. Then say those are not effective, as we often find, those are kind of temporary measures. They work for a little bit, and then you end up having similar or the same problems. Then we move into the Phase 2 criteria, where those are deemed ineffective. We have a slightly different average daily traffic requirement that Osmondson still meets. Still has a speed limit of less of 25 miles an hour, still has the same functional classification. And then we run into the 85th percentile speed requirements. So on a local street, the 85th percentile speed needs to be 35 miles an hour or greater. Osmondson comes out every study we do at 33 miles per hour. It's been, I think, three or four now? So. And there's other slightly lower speeds that need to be met on certain roads adjacent to parks or in school zones. So right now, we cannot use any money in this pot for Osmondson.
And in looking at what the 85th percentile on Osmondson, for example, and this is what we have found in many of the studies that are done in the residential areas adjacent to Osmondson, is that the majority of drivers are going between 23 and, say, 35 miles an hour. What skews both perceptions and some of the data sometimes are, every couple of hours, there may be a car that does come through at 47, 50, and we've seen cars going as fast as, I think there was a 64 on Osmondson. But again, that's a handful of cars, and obviously that doesn't change the risk involved there. But the 85th percentile is sometimes an interesting number to throw out there. And essentially, it comes down to 85% of the cars are driving at or below that speed limit. And so when you look at the data, all the data that we get from these devices that we have to capture it, it is interesting to see some of the patterns involved. And the other component is the volume as well. And again, this goes back to citizen perception, is that sometimes increased traffic volume actually decreases that 85th percentile speed.
So now I want to walk through how this exact same speed study would go with our proposed changes to the traffic management plan. So everything in Phase 1 goes exactly the same, except for I would propose to eliminate the posted speed of 25 miles an hour or less to open this up to roads that have 30 or 35 mile an hour speed limits. Then we go through the same functional classification and all of that. Again, eliminate the 25 miles an hour or less criteria. And then move into the 85th percentile speed. We're proposing to reduce that requirement to 30 miles an hour. This kind of opens us up to doing more on roads if we lowered speed limits to 20 miles an hour. If we have, if we end up at 35 miles an hour, 85th percentile speed on a 20 mile an hour road, we likely have bigger issues. We probably wouldn't see that much speeding. So lowering it to 30 miles an hour would be helpful to capture those type of roads. And then we get into the point scoring system that we currently have. And Osmondson would have to score 30 or more points on our ranking list, which it does. So some of the changes to our scoring system and some of the things that it takes into account, we again use average daily traffic volume. We use speed right now. We look at average speed to give a point score to each road. Proposing to change that to the 85th percentile speed. That'll capture a little bit more of that higher-end speed, but also reduce the scoring's overall reliance on speed. We also take into account the crash record over the last five years. The formula for the crash record is needlessly complicated and doesn't really make any sense to someone who's not a traffic engineer. So the new formula will be a lot simpler. We also take into account the geometry of the road, how well you can see around corners, over hills, the separation of driveways, stuff like that. But it had very vague scoring criteria, so actually adding in a table that actually shows how many points you'd get would be a good change. We also take into account whether there's schools, whether there are dedicated pedestrian areas like parks. What we don't take into account with pedestrian areas is if there are any obvious deficiencies in the pedestrian network, like on a road like Osmondson that does not have any sidewalks and has residents walking in the street. The other thing we take into account is if it's a designated walk-to-school route or bike route. Those give a street more points because we want to slow traffic on those dedicated roads. The other thing we want to start taking more into account is the data that we actually gather. This is another component of making these decisions able to be staff-initiated. Staff looks at the data, knows how to interpret it, where a resident might see the same data and realize that, says cars are going pretty fast, but the other kind of more niche data points, they might not key in on. So right now, we have our monthly traffic safety meetings. That involves Public Works, me and Tim usually, the police department, usually Ned, and administration, which is usually Chad. We all sit down monthly and talk about things we've seen and things we think might need more looking into. We want to add a quarterly data check-in as one of those meetings to replace one of our monthly meetings, where we look more in-depth at the crash data that's happened over that quarter period, and the traffic studies that the Public Works Department has done in that last few months. So the other things we want to take more into account are crash reports. Really, the only place that those come in right now is in the scoring system. But if we start seeing the same kind of crash profiles, then that is a good thing to look further into. And we also are going to put together a city transportation map that can kind of condense and show these speeds that we're, these speeds that we're seeing, so that the public can actually interpret our road network. These will all allow us to exercise our staff judgment based on the data that we are currently collecting and that we want to collect more of. And these are just some links to both the Neighborhood Traffic Management Process. So in the meantime, before it gets updated, if any of our elected officials, you know where to direct resident concerns to. And then we also have a Fitchburg Police Traffic Concerns dashboard that shows all of these, this crash data.
And I'll just add, the dashboard also shows our enforcement activities as well. So anytime an officer checks out to monitor an area, it will display the time and date that an officer was present. It's something that we've added when we get concerns from residents that say they called and they asked for a police officer to be present, or they never see a police officer in their neighborhood. Anyone can go on there and see the last time that an officer was on their street monitoring traffic. It also shows traffic enforcement, traffic stops, and warnings.
So that's all we have in our presentation, so now we'll open it up to questions.
Oh, Dave. Couple comments on it. I've, I was on Public Works, and we created the original one. And I'm going to throw up if I have to listen to one more time that everything we have is inequitable. Okay? I'm sick and tired of that. I have residents call me all the time on this issue. I print out the forms, I take it to them, I explain it to them, and I explain also, you know, I'll help them draw it, but I said, "You have to get the signatures because we need the people on the street to agree that it's not needed," to put up there that's inequitable. I am apoplectic about that because I, you know, these are all, these are challenged neighborhoods that I'm getting the requests from. I take all of them, but there's no inequity here. People may, you know, they ask their alder, I take care of it for them. Now, if they don't fill it out, I'll follow up a few times, but it's, you know, it's not my function to do that. So I don't think the, you know, I don't think that system is broken. You know, having the citizens be responsible for their own neighborhood, I think is valuable. The second on speeding, I would say, you know, you showed that. I would, akin to the Supreme Court thing that one time where they, you know, defined pornography, and the guy says, "Well, I can't define it, but when I see it, I know it." And the same with speeding. So, you know, I realize it's relative, but what I would like to suggest, Ned, is what gets people the most mad is the 60 or, you know, the people that are flying. And damn it, we, you know, unless someone catches the license plate, I'd like the city to consider one of those cameras that captures speed and license plate. And then we set those up, and when those people do that, I know you can't write a ticket on it, but, you know, the call from the officer, a call, you know, that, you know, your neighbors, your neighbors are complaining, "We saw you going this fast," and, you know, that that may, that may help deter it. But I, you know, this whole equity thing, ah, baloney. You know, we, I look after my neighborhood, I look after the residents, and there's no inequity regarding these. And the techniques that we've used are effective. I live on a street where we installed speed bumps. It was horrible. Ned would tell you, he really doesn't have any speeding complaints on the street, you know, in the area where I live. So you have good tools in your toolbox. So thank you for putting this together. I don't mean to be overly critical. It's just struck a nerve with me on that, because I work hard on that issue.
Fair enough. And that community action request part will still be part of it. If a complaint is resident-initiated, they will still have to actually fill out that form and get the signatures.
Thank you. I don't mean to beat you up over it, Ross.
No, it's a fair point. I agree. The community engagement... No, it's, it's a fair point. I agree. The community engagement, especially in a neighborhood like yours, is critical because that's who is speeding. So spreading that awareness is important and to take some ownership. And I would love more of our neighborhoods to be connected and take ownership. I will point out the one area where I feel is sometimes challenged in connecting with city services, the area in particular that I was thinking of at the time was Greenway Cross. And we have residents that are not speaking English as their first language. They may be new to the area and may struggle to have any sort of connection with city government. And so when they're talking about their children trying to cross the street from the bus stop and not knowing who to call, that is, I think, really what Ross and I are trying to drive at and that, well, we would like to generate and foster a greater sense of community in all our neighborhoods and to take that ownership. It's, there are areas where it can be a challenge.
Fair enough, Ed. Thank you. I'm going to go to Gabriella, but I wanted to ask you a quick question first. I know these, the newer speed display signs that we were putting up, they have the ability to capture the data. Is there any way of putting that on this webpage that you have?
So yeah, that would be, once we get that traffic map up and running, that would be something that we would also have on there. It basically spits out the same data as our stat track, the stealth monitors that we use for these traffic studies. One thing that we hear a lot about the, the speed boards, the speed display signs, is that they can influence driver behavior, which they actually take readings before they do that generally. But it can be, that can be kind of a hurdle if we tried to set one of those up to capture speeding.
We want them to influence driver behavior.
So the one thing that they do track is they do track the change in driver behavior. So they'll track, they'll take a speed reading before that speed is displayed, and then they'll show the change in driver behavior.
Oh, I see.
The, the greatest change in driver behavior are folks that are already driving under the speed limit.
Sure.
They, they drop significantly below once they see that sign. So that's good to see that people are following the rules or following the rules even more. And that is a goal, I think, long-term of ours, is to post that data on the traffic dashboard. But that means someone has to download a PDF report and then upload it on there. And so it's another set of data that someone would have to manage.
All right. Gabriella.
One question about the, the new process. If you remove the 25 mile per hour barrier, then do you have, you're going to have to have different speeds upon which, so like at a 25 mile per hour street, 30 miles per hour is going to be the issue. But if it's a 30 mile per hour street or 35 mile per hour street, is that threshold going to be higher then?
So that, that 25 mile an hour threshold was the actual speed, posted speed limit. It couldn't be anything higher than that 25 miles per hour as a posted speed limit. So eliminating that would let us open it up to the 30 mile an hour roads or the 35 mile an hour roads. We could set it at 35 miles an hour as the upper limit so that we kind of eliminate using this process on a road like Verona Road or Fish Hatchery. But eliminating that won't, won't limit the roads that we can actually use this process on.
Oh, certainly. I mean, I, I think it's great to add the 30, 35 mile per hour because I know, I mean, Lacy Road, for example, is, is a road that I, I hear about a lot in terms of speeding issues. But I'm just saying, like, in terms of the phase two analysis, the eighty-fifth percentile, lowering that from 35 to 30 miles per hour as being the issue, if you're in a 30 mile per hour or 35 mile per hour road, I assume that that issue is going to be higher. Like, will we have to have a table to?
But so the eighty-fifth percentile speed would be higher than that 30 mile an hour threshold, and it still would be in that bucket. So right now, you have to be over 35 miles an hour for the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And we're going to lower that so you have to be over 30 miles an hour.
Yeah. But I mean, if it's a 30 mile per hour street.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, so it's a combination of both of those.
Yes. Yeah. So I'm just like wondering, like, is it still like five miles per hour more than the speed limit? Or is there some other, like, I assume as the, as the speed goes up, I don't know if there's like a calculation for that, but I feel like that's the only thing that becomes.
Yep.
I just wanted to ask.
Well, yeah, we'll definitely take that into account. Yeah.
All right. Julia.
Following Gabriella's question about the 30. Okay, so we lowered to 30. We are open the door that we are going to have more, you know, high expectation on more people thinking that we need to fix the road and put a speed bump. And I am concerned about capacity, funding, and we are increasing the expectation that maybe we are not going to be able to fix that. You know, so this is something that we need to be careful about that because we are going to open another Pandora box. You know what I mean? So I don't know if you have considered that, you know?
Yeah. No, I completely agree that we, we may run into that issue. But the issue we're running into right now is none of the streets that we have community, community action requests for actually meet our criteria. That, that's true. And the other limiting factor for this is that we have our, our traffic calming CIP item, and that's where this money comes from. And part of the neighborhood traffic management process calls out that once that year's budget is spent on traffic calming, then we move, the projects get put back into the bucket for the next year, once we have additional funding. So we, we won't run over the budget for that item with this current.
No, I, I agree with you, but we are creating high expectation that the city will, will fix that. And it's putting a speeding bump, you know, because you usually, when you use, like, consider like a half a mile or whatever it is, I don't know, three or four block, you need to put like maybe, I don't know how many, four or five speed bump. If you have $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 there, you know what I mean? So my concern is that we are going to create high expectation that the city is going to take care of this issue. And, you know, we are going to do it according to the funding that we have. And maybe we are not going to fund for five years, six years, you know? So, and could affect our reputation that we are delivering more than we promised. You know what I mean? We promised, what is it? There is an expression. What is? I don't remember.
Over promise and under delivery.
Yeah. So that one is my concern.
Fair enough.
So if I may, real quick, we had talked about this, the three of us, and I think as, you, you both are on the same page, to be honest with you. And I think one of the things that we talked about is that very concern. And there will be actual scoring that will be utilized as these data collections are done. So when Ross and Ned take a look at what the, you know, if we do 10 data collections and they'll score them all, and perhaps only there'll be enough funding to do the top two, right? And then it would carry over into the next year or whenever the next batch of funding is available. And we can look to make sure that as we put information on the website, that it's clear based upon, you know, projects could be, surveys could be, you know, will be scored, ranked according to score. And, you know, there's only certain amounts of funding provided at any given time. And when the funding is exhausted, you know, we'll wait for the next, next round of funding to be available, to try to help frame those expectations right from the front.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable. I don't see that it's going to be a good idea to lower that.
Randy?
Yeah, I mean, just to follow up on that, I think any project has a, we prioritize. I mean, if you want, you call it scoring, but we, we prioritize often with, based on risk. But I'm just going to, I have a number of points. I just want to clarify, I've been working with on Osmondson, it's in District Four, along with Jim Wheeler for the last four years. I'm not sure Bill's involvement, other than with the striping. But I've been working with my neighbors on Osmondson for, for four years and just trying to move that needle. Each time the studies come back and nothing qualifies, and it, and are you saying based on the information this evening by lowering that score that Osmondson would qualify as, as a study to some type of traffic calming, maybe that curb extensions or speed tables? Or is that what you're saying based on the new information?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. Because that's very important to them. And even this past week, there's been lots of conversation, just out and about because of the resurfacing. But back to the slide that says for proposed traffic management process. And you mentioned item, item four, I believe it was, a resident, resident or staff can start the process. Is that, is that the, is that the petition? Is that what you're referencing? Or what is that, what is that start? What, what do you mean by that?
So a resident would still be able to begin the process with a community action request form, the current petition.
Okay.
We're talking about maybe lowering the amount of signatures needed for that, but that's the point that's very much up for discussion.
Sure.
Or staff would be able to start the process without that community action request form. Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that's, that would kind of open us up to the more commercial roads that don't actually have residents, but may also need traffic calming.
Okay. Then, I didn't see anywhere where it says elected official. I'm assuming, if I wanted to initiate, would I, then I'd have to go door to door circulating the petition? Or, or, I mean, it's not part of the equation, but often we're thrown into that equation, take the leadership, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's another point that we could definitely consider is opening it up to elected officials. One of our kind of thoughts on that was most of the time our elected officials are getting those complaints from a resident in the first place.
Yeah. And other than we go to, we go to Ned or your, your group and, and we go through that loop. And you're, you're doing a fine job, but I understand, you know, the, you know, the information that you work, or the resources you have, and it comes back out and we don't qualify. We've already had that conversation. But what about the other issue that, that I run into often is like County Trunk Highway MM. And Ned, you, you've responded back to some of the residents, and they're usually the same residents, but there is a concern on MM. Is that where we would go to the county, county supervisor and have that conversation? Because it is so inconsistent on County Trunk Highway MM as far as speed, as far as the, the signs. You could be 20 and all of a sudden you can go up to 40. And I, I don't, I don't think that helps the situation out there, is what I'm saying.
I agree with you there. And yeah, County Highway MM is completely run and maintained by the county. There are some county highways, like the northern part of Fish Hatchery Road that are now Pittsburgh Roads, and McKee is still designated as a county highway, but we obviously maintain all of that. But the southern part of Fish Hatchery Road, County Highway M and County Highway MM are all governed completely by the county. So we would have to, like you said, interface with them and voice our concerns to them.
So that's not part of the equation because there's, we have no jurisdiction over it.
Right, yeah.
And just on a good note, thank you very much. There has been significant coverage on Osmondson as far as additional patrol. I know there's been a number of complaints, and whenever your office, you have, your officers have time, they are out on Osmondson. So my colleagues here may not want to hear that, but I think there's been an increased presence. So, yeah. Thank you.
Just a comment on that. As far as MM, that used to be 55, all, all the way from, well, basically all the way from Rimrock to the outskirts of the Village of Oregon. And what happened was we had a city council member who was also a Dane County Board member, and he had a couple of friends who lived in that residential section in the middle of MM. And that's why that section got lowered to 40.
I don't think there's any 55 now. There's, there's some other additional in there. It's pretty, it's pretty, pretty well chopped up.
Yeah. And it's, and, but the thing is, we can't do anything about it, but we can petition the county. And it may be, it may be a good idea to bring our county board representative in to discuss that. Bill, you had something?
Yeah, a couple of things. I guess probably most importantly, in the room tonight, we've got members of the Plan Commission, we've got our city planner here, we've got members of TTC, we've got members of the Board of Public Works. I'm going to propose that going forward, whenever there are new neighborhoods built, we take a careful look at how we're building these roads in the first place so that we don't have to have this discussion in any new neighborhoods that we build.
Well, I think we do that. I think in, in newer neighborhoods, we're planning them to deal with some of these issues. But, you know, when you're talking about neighborhoods that were built in the seventies, that's why Osmondson and, and Richardson, those roads are so freaking wide, which we would never in a million years approve today. And that's why, you know, even though those roads are so freaking wide, they don't have any sidewalks, and they have houses that are, you know, in some cases, the houses are 100 feet back from the road. So, you know, in our newer neighborhoods, to try to, to try to influence traffic, the roads are narrower, we move the buildings up closer to the road, we put in sidewalks, and we do those things because all of those things are shown to calm traffic. But, you know, we're going to have, we are going to have to spend some money to, to, to deal with some of these issues in our older neighborhoods where that just simply wasn't a concern at the time.
Agreed. And I guess, so Dave, getting back to your comment about equity, I guess I would like a little more clarification. So I had emailed Ross and said, hey, you know, there's this, I don't know what it is, three-quarter mile stretch of Pembroke, where 50% of the affected area amounted to about, you know, 20 signatures or something like that. Whereas a one-third mile stretch of high ridge trail probably needs in excess of 100. And I think that's, in my mind, where the equity issue comes into play. And I don't, Ross, do you have any clarification? Because you did email back and say that we really only need 30 up there. And I'm not sure how that was arrived at. So clarification would be appreciated.
So that was, for that particular case, it was kind of an internal staff discussion for exactly the, the points that you brought up, that, you know, there's, I don't know how many apartment units there, but the 50% that we require would have been 100 to 200 signatures. And that's also a change that I'm proposing in the future community action requests to bring that down, to have a maximum, to, so the signature amount would be based on a percentage of residents, and then you'd have a maximum amount that you would be required to get, which would be around that 30 signature mark.
Okay. I did have just one more small thing. So you had mentioned earlier, in phase one, you're not even going to consider a road unless it's got at least 200 vehicles per day. But then in phase two, you're, you're going to weed anybody out if they don't have at least 500. Why, why the difference? Why allow it to go forward with 200 if you're going to disqualify them if they're less than 500?
Basically, to open up those phase one strategies to roads that are under 500 vehicles per day. So basically, a 200 vehicle per day road is something like, I don't, Berry Drive or a, a road in the, the Briarwood neighborhood where there's really no traffic besides the people who live in that small neighborhood. The 500 per day, you open yourself up to roads like, say, Jackalyn Drive or Florin Drive, where there's still relatively quiet local streets, but you do get some through traffic going between larger roads. So spending those resources on those extremely low traffic roads to actually put in speed bumps or traffic circles, stuff like that, might not make sense. But then opening that stuff up to the slightly larger roads, I think makes a little bit more sense financially.
Dave?
As long as I've been here, you know, we've designed our streets to the warrants. And that's served us well. We won't, I don't think we'll ever go down the road that like Madison does, if you go down on like Wingrae, where the residents didn't want traffic on there, so they put a speed bump every 20 feet and stop signs. You know, we're not, Pittsburgh is never going to do that. You know, we're going to design to warrants and we have to put some traffic calming. But we won't use it to change the flow of traffic like the city of Madison has done. You know, I, I don't think that is in our toolbox, nor do I want it in our toolbox.
All right. Gabriella.
I just wanted to, I appreciate the, the Pittsburgh Police Traffic Data Map, and I think a transportation map would be, would be great. I, I think the map section of our website is the, like, the, the gem that not enough people have seen, and it's only getting better. only getting better because of our GIS coordinator. It's like, I just looked at it and I was like, oh my gosh, there's these story maps now, where you can explore all the Fitchburg parks and open spaces. Anyway, it's incredible. So everyone that's watching should go to the GIS map, um, section of the website. It's at the very, very bottom. There's, there's a link to it. Um, but yeah, I thank you for putting that together. I think it's a really good resource, and I think it's something that we can send around, and that visual input, I think, is really helpful for people to understand what's happening. So thanks for, for that effort. And thanks for this presentation. This was great.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions?
If I may, I'm just gonna take the opportunity to acknowledge what Gabriella said. Uh, one, thanks for the council's support for that position, but that is obviously an example of what staff can do when there's the capacity and the resources made available.
When we have staff?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I had, uh, one more question that I missed before. Um, so you had, in the proposed changes, you had listed, um, the crash data, and you specifically called out fatalities, but that's not the only thing you're looking at, right?
Uh, correct. We're looking at, uh, crashes with, uh, property damage, crashes with injuries, and fatality crashes. Um, that, I just called out fatalities specifically there, because I felt like they weren't rated highly enough in the old system, so increasing their weight, I felt, would be helpful. So, in the previous system, they were weighted three times a property damage crash, and I'm proposing to up that to five times. So.
All right, seeing no other hands. Thanks, guys, for coming, and thanks for the work that you've done on this, and we'll look forward to an actual proposal.
Thank you, guys.
We will move on to 6B, which is project updates on the teen center and the hub.
Well, thank you all for having me to come this evening. I just have a couple of slides I'd like to share with you, and I will talk through, um, briefly, an update on both the teen center and the hub. So if you just give me a sec. All right. Do I have that? So just a quick little update on overall HNI for you. Last year, of course, we added our fourth priority neighborhood, Southdale. We have continued the Neighborhood Navigator program throughout this year. Earlier this year, council awarded over $86,000 in HNI grants, and recently, a couple of months ago, we presented to the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee, uh, an annual update, and I'm just sharing that link. You can find it under, uh, the Planning Department, and you'll see, um, under HNI, um, information, you'll see an update. And, um, staff's put together a real thorough, comprehensive update of all the activities for HNI over the last two years. So I encourage you to take a look at that when you have a chance. So the teen center, uh, just to recap where we are right now, uh, back in January of this year, staff put together an RFP for the second phase of the teen center feasibility study. Uh, that RFP was presented to the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee for feedback, uh, last January 11th, and then council reviewed, um, the RFP, uh, in January at the Committee of the Whole. So with that input, staff went ahead and released the RFP. That RFP, just as a brief reminder, included , uh, three main sections. The first section, scope A through C, what included a needs assessment, a market analysis, community engagement, and some preferred programming. And then, um, the second part of that RFP included, uh, a study on management structure and operation planning. And then the final part of that RFP included the development concept design, site selection, site analysis, some preliminary building design, some preliminary cost estimates, and then, um, some capital budget, um, work. The staff received one response, one proposal to that RFP. That, uh, response came from EQT by Design and their partners. And, um, unfortunately, that, uh, proposal, that one proposal, didn't include one of that, one of my three big sessions, sections of that RFP. So, and, which was in particular, the management structure and the operation plan. So in discussion with the mayor and, um, the administration, uh, staff is working to proceed with, um, a portion of that proposal, in particular, the portion on, uh, programming. Um, so that would be Part C. Uh, this has been a long, delayed part, process, and I apologize for that. Um, EQT and their team takes off, uh, a month in the summer, and, um, so our scheduling has not aligned, but fortunately, um, on Friday, actually, we're going to all sit down again and see if we can't hash out this next section for, um, for the, for the contract. And I'm hoping that we can bring, uh, the proposed contract, uh, for the next stage of the feasibility study to council, um, at least for referral in September. I will also just, um, man, man, mentioned that, um, the planning staff has continued to work on this. Um, with the request from mayor, uh, we have initiated, we have some staff time through our wonderful, um, uh, intern, and she's been helping us put together an asset map, um, that is looking at, um, different organizations that do provide any teen opportunities in the area, listing those opportunities. And then she's putting together a report that we will have ready to hopefully present, uh, to the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee, um, at their meeting in September. Um, so I think I kind of summarized where we are with that, and I will take any questions, uh, before I continue on to my brief update with the hub.
Yeah, Julia?
So, uh, one of the other thing that I have done, I have met with a two, um, Fitchburg Supervisor, uh, to, to talk about the teen center and how they can, um, you know, they can incorporate, uh, in this county CIP on the county budgets and funding for the teen center. So I know that they are, one of the Fitchburg, uh, uh, Dane County Supervisor is working on that. Um, so the idea is that also to obtain some funding for Dane County, because at the end of the day, this one is gonna be also Fitchburg Dane County. So, so I, I am working with that too, um, to try to see if Dane County can also help out with some funding. So.
Gabriella?
I just wanted to clarify about the item C in the RFP. So we're, basically, there's gonna be two organizations doing, executing the, the RFP. The contract is gonna be EQP, EQT by Design doing two parts, and then somebody else doing the third part? Is that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, but can you clarify?
Yeah, no, um, the, we only received one proposal to our RFP. And, um, so in, in our staff discussions with the mayor, we, we, it was determined that we probably have enough information to work from, with, um, Parts A and B, so it would be okay to just proceed with Part C of that RFP.
Okay, so just, we're just proceeding with one portion of it. And then, uh, do we have a sense of the timeline, or would that be, you know, elucidated when we get to September with the actual approval?
I'm not quite sure yet. Um, I, 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 I would think three or four months, um, for this, but it's something that we will have to work out with EQT.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, you had mentioned, um, site selection and site analysis. Where are we on that? Do we, has it been narrowed down to any great degree?
No, sir, it hasn't. Um, in the original RFP, uh, we, I, I proposed a series of steps that towards the end, after we had gone through a process of looking at, um, programming, management structures, operational plans, once we understood what was really going to be happening in the building and how it was going to function, then we would start site selection. So at this point, we have not started that.
Any other questions about the teen center? All right, we will move on then.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, just briefly on, um, the hub, of course, um, council recently approved, uh, the easement release for the parking lot easement, which, um, needed to be worked out before we could proceed with, um, with, uh, working towards the construction documents and bidding out. Um, that appears to be, have been, uh, sorted out on that parking lot easement. Uh, the, the public works staff is still working out on the final details of the stormwater line that would still need to run through the city property. That is getting close. Um, and then tentative final schedule right now is the final construction documents would be worked out in this fall, and then bid, um, in late winter, and then start construction in spring of 2024, and we're looking at approximately a 12-month construction timeline. And let me know if I missed something, Chad.
All right, Gabriella?
I'm curious if we can just talk about, because, I mean, there was a significant delay. Like, we expected to bid it out and have it start this year. So can you explain, obviously, there's something to do with the parking lot easement and the stormwater, but can you just give an answer to why the delay has been so significant? Because it also has, it has budget implications as well, because obviously, costs continue to rise, and if we're not gonna start, if it's a 12-month construction starting next year, that's, you know, that would be a lot more expensive than if we had started it in the spring of this year. So can we just, like, summarize what, what, what happened?
I can take that if you'd like, Deanna.
Thank you very much.
So in, uh, January of this year, I was informed by, uh, I think it was a member of our engineering team about the easement issue that had been discovered as we were beginning to design, or get deeper into design for the hub project. And, uh, ultimately, what we learned, I know you had, uh, had some information about that when we presented the parking lot easement, but there was, uh, information in the CSM that was, uh, approved and signed by council that came in after the fact, uh, namely, this parking lot easement and a couple other items that we weren't aware of, uh, when this land was dedicated to us. They weren't, they weren't on the CSM that was, was submitted. I don't know how that happened. Um, you know, I think that's, that ship has kind of sailed at this point in time. But we did, uh, work for, uh, the last six months, uh, with Plesco as the, um, entity that donated that parkland to address, uh, several issues. Namely, there are not only a parking lot easement, uh, on the hub parcel, but there is also, or there was a parking lot easement on the hub parcel, that's now gone. Uh, there is also a water and sewer utility easement, uh, for Plesco's, uh, property. Uh, that's on the far west side of the existing hub parcel. Uh, so Plesco wanted some assurances that they could continue to have those easements. Uh, those easements were identified on the CSM, uh, when we accepted that. So, um, since they were there, um, obviously being an urban developed area, you know, we know we're gonna need to have to work around a few things. And, uh, we ultimately, through the process, you know, agreed with Plesco that those water and sewer utility easements could remain. And then one of the other larger sticking points then was what, what's gonna happen with the stormwater. And the stormwater currently, uh, from a Plesco property to the north, uh, that has post-road address, does have, uh, a storm drain that connects into a stormwater pipe that then brings it basically roughly down the center of the current hub parcel. So clearly, that was going to be a problem, uh, for, uh, construction of the hub, based on its location. And also, there was no easement for this particular stormwater, uh, pipe. That wasn't part of the CSM. There'd been never anything recorded for that. Uh, the city did not want to grant an easement, a brand-new easement, for, uh, a private purpose on city parkland. Uh, we didn't feel that that was appropriate, and I think there is also a strong legal case, uh, that it should not be done as well. Uh, so there was, uh, several months of, of, uh, back and forth to try to get it to a solution, uh, where also the stormwater issue would be addressed. And at the end of the day, what the city and Plesco have agreed is that we will put in, the city will put in that stormwater infrastructure, uh, it will be owned by us, and that we will give them a revocable permit, uh, to utilize that pipe, uh, for their stormwater. And, uh, the terms of that have been tentatively agreed to, uh, by both Plesco and the city. And ultimately, at the end of the day, uh, what would need to happen for that, uh, permit to be revoked is the city engineer would have to, to make the case for why that, uh, permit would need to be revoked, and they would need to present that to the city council for consideration and approval to revoke the permit. So it took a while to get where we needed to get to in order to get this, uh, project back on track. Uh, I think we are all hoping that it would have been resolved sooner, but at the end of the day, again, we're now finally able to restart this project, and, uh, I'm looking forward to, to hopefully getting some shovels in the ground when, when the winter's over.
I think the other thing that we need to, um, we need to start, uh, doing, uh, if we, construction start, you know, in the spring of 2024, maybe we should have a meeting, um, outreach meeting with the neighbors. I also talked to Chad and Scott Endall, uh, so to inform the, the, you know, the, the residents around the, the parcel, that the project is coming, and what are the expectation, uh, timeframe, timeline about the construction and all of that, and what is expect, you know, um, uh, because, um, uh, because of the delay, you know, with this, was delayed for a year almost. So, uh, the other thing that I want to be sure that, uh, that we look, uh, you know, there, there was a, a lot of outreach that the city did when we started working in 2019 with this project. There is a lot of outreach survey, uh, meeting with stakeholders. So, um, so I think that, um, the city do, did a due diligence at that moment of, to inform, um, those residents about this project. So, uh, if you have any comment about that outreach, maybe you can contact Chad, he got the information. So, um, but I think this is a priority, uh, for me, uh, to build this, uh, you know, the, to build this incredible park in that area, uh, that we are also trying to, uh, bring all this project development to improve the corridor. I see, so I am very happy that we are moving forward with this project. So, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, so just a question on the stormwater, um, facilities. Um, how does, how does the neighboring lot that Plesco was going to build on and apparently is no more, I mean, how, how does that play into all this? And is there any additional hurdles that need to be jumped through?
Uh, the project that Plesco had proposed to the east of the hub parcel has been put on hold. Um, they haven't, uh, they haven't determined if and when they'll move forward with that project. But based upon, um, the collaboration that will, uh, be happening in regards to the stormwater measurements in place for the parcels to the north, I'm not anticipating that any construction to the east will have any, um, any notable impact on the hub itself. Uh, that stormwater, uh, should be contained within that parcel or otherwise managed within that parcel, uh, to the east, and it shouldn't, uh, again, it shouldn't have any impact on the, on the hub parcel to the west of it. So I think, I think it is important to consider that, you know, this neighborhood was developed in the seventies, so of course, the stormwater requirements and measurements aren't nearly, uh, to the, to the, to today's standards. So, uh, as I understand, and I'm still learning a lot of our, uh, building requirements and permitting requirements, that, uh, your stormwater. permitting requirements, that, uh, your stormwater now needs to be managed within your parcel or other stormwater facilities there, so we should be, we should be okay.
Gabriella.
Is there anything we can learn from, is this just kind of like a freak accident? Like, this just happened to be so many issues? Or is this something that we can, like, anticipate for future parkland dedications? And, I mean, I, is there a way that we can make sure this doesn't happen again in the future?
Yeah, I think there's, with anything, there's always lessons learned, particularly when you have a delay of, of seven months on something, right? And I think ultimately, you know, um, I think it was back in 2018 when this parcel was dedicated, uh, to the city and, you know, whether something was missed, uh, by city staff or something was left out, uh, inadvertently or otherwise on the CSM that was, was ultimately, uh, submitted for recording versus what was submitted to this, to the, um, to the council. You know, we've, we've definitely discussed that as staff, and we think we have made some, some positive, uh, modifications to how we would approach the situation, uh, with the staff that we have in place now. So I think that, yes, we have learned some things through this process, and we've all probably gotten a couple of, I, I won't speak for you, but I know I've gotten a couple of gray hairs, uh, trying to maneuver through this, uh, situation created five years ago.
Yeah. There's, there's always, as long as I've been around dealing with this stuff, there's always little weird things that come up. Usually, it's a private developer's problem and not ours, but, you know, because this is our facility, uh, it gets to be ours in this case. And that, that area up there, um, with the golf course and the E-way and, uh, and everything else that's going on there, there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, and I'm, would not be at all surprised if some things didn't get recorded properly back when this was originally developed, so. But we're, we're on, we're on track.
We're on a new track.
We're on A-track.
We're on A-track.
We're balancing on one rail. All right, any other, uh, comments about this? Thanks for coming.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
All right, so our next item is, uh, the referendum update, and we have a presentation from our finance director.
Let us get organized. Oh, I can't see, is it coming through? Excellent. Uh, so tonight, I don't have a very long presentation, you're welcome, uh, but we are going to kind of continue the conversation that we've been having over the last several committee of the whole meetings. Uh, so want to give some updates and kind of get what our next steps are going to be, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So first, as we're talking about referendum, obviously, the biggest, uh, thing that I've heard has been additional staff. So we've done a police staffing needs analysis, this is the summary from there. It shows the variety of positions that are considered to be needs over the next five years, as well as, don't forget, uh, the language on the side that says, in addition to the positions identified here, there's also nine officers that are considered needed over the next five years. Fire department also has a staffing plan, uh, they have three phases here totaling those positions. And then Baker Tilly just completed their staffing study, uh, which I know you saw at the personnel committee, and included a total of 11 FTE in addition to those. Um, so lots of items that are at least in the, the options to think about, what it is that we want to ask for. I would never recommend that we ask for all of that in one referendum. I mean, that would be doubling our tax bill, uh, which is not going to be palatable. Um, so a big part of what you all will have to do is figure out what do you want to ask for, and then how much that would equate to.
Offer, we also have asked department heads through the budget process to submit their personnel requests, uh, over the next five years. So staff is continuing to compile that list. It is, uh, obviously inclusive of the items that, uh, Misty has already identified between two public safety departments in the Baker-Tilly study, uh, but it, as you can imagine, also has, uh, a number of additional staffing requests that, uh, would be anticipated over in the next five years. Once staff has a chance to fully compile that list, uh, we will be sure to share that with council.
So as we're talking dollar amounts, the hard part is that these, if we do go to referendum or do something else for our funding sources in '24, that would be for 2025. Uh, but I know everybody's interested, you know, if we do add fill-in-the-blank position, about how much would that account for? And so I included a handful of example positions, just to kind of give a ballpark of the dollar amounts we're talking about when we add certain positions. You can see, as expected, the cost will vary, whether it's public safety that has a lot of equipment and uniform requirements, or if it's not, and then what kind of level of the organization that position would fall into. Um, so the positions are generally about 100 to 150,000, depending on the, the different components. And then at the last couple of meetings, there's been a handful of other items that I've heard mentioned, including transit, uh, either general transit or senior center transportation, and then the two new buildings that we're, uh, building for, I guess, more likely the hub piece that you just heard about, and then the police facility that we talked about last night. So those two are on the kind of list as well. As we're talking about dollar amount too, I think it is important to keep in mind how much that would be for that average homeowner. So again, this is just ballpark, uh, this is based on current information. It will be very different by the time we get to this point next year. Um, but if we go the lower end, a million-dollar referendum, on the average home would be an $85 per year increase about, which is about a $7 per month. Uh, if we go to the high end of what I include on this chart, $5 million referendum would be a $415 increase annually to the average home for about $35 a month. Um, obviously, we could ask for something less or something more or something within these ranges, but just wanted to kind of give you a frame of reference as we're having this conversation, so that you know what those amounts mean.
This is perpetuity. Okay, isn't the one, you know, we, we talked about, well, we'll only go for referendum one time, but the cost is for perpetuity. Okay, I just want to make that clear to everyone.
Correct, especially if we're using the referendum to pay for things like operating costs of new facilities or staff, those are costs that would continue and actually would escalate as time goes on. So yes, 100%. So Chad and I did have a conversation with Mueller Communications. This is that organization we mentioned at the last meeting, uh, that is really one of the, the leaders in this kind of world. Uh, they've helped with a lot of municipal referendums with that public education and outreach piece. Uh, they are experts in the area, they are, you know, marketing, they are education, and a big part of what our goal will be, if we do go to referendum, will be to make sure that our voters are informed about what the ask is and why the ask is there and what it means. And so getting some outside help to help us make sure that that message is clear, I think is really important. And so they propose a three-step kind of process. So first step would be that options assessment, second step would be a community survey, and then third step, if we take it, would be to do the referendum education piece of it. Uh, there is a timeline for what that would kind of look like, and then a budget estimate. So I'll men, point out real quickly that this total amount does not include that third phase, because we don't know that we'll go to referendum. You know, we're kind of all reading the tea leaves and thinks that's where we're going to end up, but we don't know for sure until we do those other two steps and see what our community is open to and interested in. Um, so this cost is probably double, uh, if you factor in that other last phase, which is really one of the most important ones, if you ask me, to make sure that the voters are educated.
How, how much money did we have in the ARPTID plan set aside for this?
Yeah, we have $100,000 between Mueller and Ellers, so Ellers, our financial advisor, will have to help us out as well. Uh, so when I, assuming we want to move forward, and I bring forward the pre-approval for Mueller, it'll include a budget amendment for probably another 25,000, to make sure that we've got the money to do it. And actually, I might ask for a little bit more too, in case there's printing and, you know, if we want to run an ad or any of that other stuff. I'm, I'll probably request to have a little bit of cushion there so that we can make sure we, we do it right. And then next steps, so, uh, assuming we do want to go down this path, I will work with Mueller to get that contract worked through with our legal counsel, with a target of doing a direct referral to our next meeting to get them under contract along with that budget amendment. Also work with Ellers to do their contract. That cost is likely not something that would have to go through council, so we'll get that one done quick. And then council will have to continue those conversations about what the ask is and then what your options are in order to fund that. And that was all I had for my presentation.
Uh, thank you, Misty. I'll also offer, I know one of the things we heard at, uh, one of the last two committee of the whole meetings was, uh, potentially including, uh, additional transit options within the referendum. And I met, uh, with, uh, metro staff as well as, uh, included, uh, Tim and Ross from our engineering department, uh, to talk about what our options could be as it relates to improving intra-city transit service, uh, via Madison Metro. They are going to take a look at, uh, the current, uh, routes that they have in the city and, uh, offer some suggestions and options on, uh, where potential service enhancements can be made to, uh, improve connectivity as well as frequency. And they had hoped to, uh, have that information to us in approximately 60 days. So hopefully by mid, mid-October, we'll have some information from them on what that might look like to improve, um, intra-city transit.
All right, um, in, uh, I've been thinking about this quite a lot because there's a lot of different directions we can go with this. And one of the thoughts I had earlier this week is, um, in the staffing study, they, uh, recommended hiring a communications director. And since, uh, we've, it, one, there have been two constant things that I have experienced in all of my years involved in Pittsburgh government. The two are residents complain about speeders and residents complain about the city not communicating very well. So, um, that may be, that may be a position that we want to fund sooner, um, but I, I think, um, at some point, relatively soon, um, when is the, when is the mayor's proposed budget scheduled to be released?
Middle of September.
Okay, so that's coming in a couple of weeks, because it would be good to know what we're proposing to fund through, um, through the, uh, through our regular tax base that we already have, um, and what, what may not make it in. Um, but if we can get that position funded, uh, we should probably also set aside some money. You had calculated what it would cost to do a mailing to the whole city, um, like a newsletter as a replacement for the Pittsburgh story?
Yeah, I think, uh, on my recollection on that, we were looking at, was it maybe four to 5,000 to do, I think, like, maybe a five-by-seven, you know, postcard-type mailer, and I don't recall if that was single or double-sided.
So we may want to include some money with that public information person. We might, we might want to include some money for sending out, like, a newsletter once every quarter or something. I have drawn a blank. But please speak to us.
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I totally agree with you, Jay. Um, I think just with my experience, it's been three times where we've had major projects go out and people have really complained about, initially, the information may go out, but then that follow-up of keeping, keeping, putting information out. And I'm glad you said that because I will forward the City of Middleton, City of Sun Prairie, and City of Madison job descriptions for a communication, um, director, um, to the council, and I think a lot of what's in there actually fits. But, you know, I also think that we should consider someone being, um, a housing person, um, going for SITA. Um, SITA is very busy and, um, we need them because when we create these TIDS, we really need people to go out and bring businesses, bring projects into those TIDS, and you know, you, we can raise the tax levy based on that new construction. So we, that's a lot of work of trying to convince businesses to actually come, um, to, um, Pittsburgh, and our people are doing a very good job, and they're very busy, um, so with, uh, trying to attract businesses. But right now, you know, there's a lot of things happening in housing with the feds, with the state, monies being available, becoming available, loans becoming available, but we have no one to work on that. And if we're saying that, you know, we're all about affordable housing, we have these housing plans and everything else like that, we need to start moving on those and not be kicking those down, down the road. And, you know, and I understand public safety is, is huge too, but there are some things that we keep saying that we're going to do, you know, that we just need to start, start doing, and just getting these plans off the shelf and actually working on them.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I had a, when I was mayor, I had, um, proposed a public information position, which the council cut out, but I had also proposed doing some more things with SITA in the housing arena. And, you know, Mike's, Mike's a great guy as our economic development director, but he doesn't have the housing experience, and we do need, we do need to find, um, I don't know if, I don't know if we need a whole new position for that, maybe we do, but, um, I, I think that's something we should look into and see, you know, working in conjunction with the planning department to figure out what we need, um, uh, to, to help encourage some of those projects, because, you know, it's, it's, you know, and I, I, I keep wondering how long this housing bubble is going to exist, because, you know, we, we already went through 2008, so we know this happens, but, you know, every month, every single month, new renters moving into my building are paying more, you know, the new lease rates are higher than they were the month before. I have never seen lease rates increase every month in one single apartment building. Um, so this is, this is new, this is different. But, you know, we're, we're, we're pricing people out of housing, and there's a lot of people who, you know, obviously, everybody needs housing, so we got it, we have to find a way to, to, to rope this in and control some of the costs and get some things happening. But, you know, I don't have the expertise to do it, and Mike doesn't have the expertise to do it, and I don't know that Deanna does either, so we need to, we need to find someone who can work on that. Gabriella.
Yeah, the other thing about the communications director, I, I, I agree with that. I think all those positions that, that take these, like, small little burdens that every single person in the city has and takes it away and brings it to somebody that actually has expertise, then that frees up, that's half-time to do what they're actually trained to do. So admin support is one thing that clearly was identified as missing in the, and like, I mean, that printing labels, like, I, I don't know if anyone's printed labels for mailings, but like, that can take me forever to figure out, and like, it is, I've done it before, and I'm like, wow, this is not a great use of my time. Even little things like that, but like, an admin, like, does it in a second because they know. Anyway, so that expertise and like, with communications, like, it's a really difficult thing to do, and we're constantly asking staff to do it, and they don't have the expertise, and they don't have the time. And it, so I don't blame them, I don't blame anybody, and I don't blame the city for not, for us having an issue, but I do think there's an opportunity, and I'm happy to see that Baker Tilly identified that there's like this really missing piece. And then things like grants management, grants, I, I can't imagine how much time is taken up by administering grants and applying for grants and searching for grants, that's something that an expert in that can do. Um, and the GAS coordinator position that we already did last year, like, that, if we're working with ArcGIS, it's incredibly complex, and not everyone has to learn how to do it, and they shouldn't have to learn because they can focus on things like engineering. So, um, yeah, so I, that, that's the kind of thing that, that came to the fore for me in some of those studies, was how can we take off these, these tasks that take forever, um, and give it to an expert, and then we could just increase the capacity of everybody's job.
So I, I think, um, you know, from the discussion we've had here the last few, few months, um, I think the council's got kind of a vision, um, you know, everyone's got a little bit different priorities, but I think we're mostly on the same page as to what the things are we think we need. So when, when you're, when you're talking about, um, this, uh, where was it, where was it? Gosh darn it, I went too far. Phase 1A, um, identifying specific needs, we, we are probably pretty close to that already. I mean, I think we, we probably just need a work session with some numbers to sit down and hash it out and, and figure out how much it's going to cost. And is that what this consultant would do, is kind of guide that session, or how, how does it all work out?
Yeah, I was just gonna, gonna mention, um, I think what could be helpful is ultimately, we're going to create an internal work team as well with staff to help, obviously, help to refine, uh, you know, the ask, so to speak, and work with council, you know, based on your requests and what you need for information and resources to help make that decision as a, as a as a, as a body. But I do think that would be helpful as we, you know, lead into, to bringing a consultant on board is I would request each of the elected officials to privately send an email, you know, individually send an email so we don't have any walk-in quorum issues to me with some indication as to what do you think might be the appropriate dollar amount that you would like to see as part of the referendum? And of that dollar amount, how would you see it distributed via, you know, what are the positions you'd like to see or the other operating expenses, be it transit, be it hub, be it, you know, police facility, whatever the case may be? So that we as staff can at least take a look at that. We could then, you know, put it all together into one document and try to start to find some common themes there where they're at and help share that and use that with the council to help continue to refine the, the overall ask if that's what you decide to do via referendum. So I would ask you over the next, well, I think maybe ideally in advance of, of the council meeting on September 12th, when ideally you're potentially approving a contract with Mueller Communications, you know, that we already have that information that gives staff an opportunity to begin to, to organize it and, and see what the themes are so that perhaps, I was going to ask Jay if, if we just wanted to add a standing agenda item to the committees of the whole for referendum updates and discussions.
By all means.
So then we could definitely, you know, have that available for the September committee of the whole. And of course, we can distribute that collated list out in advance so you have that information.
So.
Can you send this slideshow to us?
Absolutely. I actually was going to ask the previous presentations that we had tonight, can they send those to us?
Yeah.
Because there was a lot of information that we didn't have a chance to get through. Bill?
Yeah, so Chad, you said we should email you with a dollar amount in addition to what we think the priorities are. I'm not sure I'm qualified to come up with a dollar amount. I guess I kind of feel like I can come up with some priorities and I would like to know, you know, the status of, of the, of the current budget, you know, for 2024 and how many compromises have been made? What would the budget be like if we had everything that we thought we needed? And then, you know, we don't want to ask, we don't want to go to referendum very often. So what are the rules that we're going to play by? You know, if we say we want to fund certain positions or certain services in perpetuity, then that could grant us license to increase the amount of money we collect every year. But in terms of, yeah, so I guess I'm not, I'm not entirely clear on, on what your ask is in specific.
Regarding the budget, it's, it's very tight, the budget for next year. So if we, if we find two position next year, it's going to be, if we find two full-time position, it's going to be too many. So this is the situation.
So I kind of did some of my own little back of the napkin calculations and I came up with numbers very similar to that. So my, my thought is I would not want to see a referendum exceed $3 million. That's $250 a year on the average house. So I think that's a reasonable number to shoot for. I don't want to, I don't want to go at a million dollars because that's just, this is a lot of work and it's going to take us a lot of time and it needs to be, it needs to be a worthwhile endeavor if we're going to ask the voters to do this. So that's my, that's my answer to your question.
Yeah, and my response, Bill, is I think you have a couple of ways in which you could, you know, fulfill my, my request is you could look at this and say, okay, well, you know, whether it's me as a homeowner or you as an elected official or a combination of the two, you know, what, what will I and or my constituents perhaps be most willing to support in looking at what the average impact would be on a, on an average home? You could look at it from that perspective. And then the other way you can look at it is if you use the priorities that you and or your constituents have identified and start to look at some of the cost estimates associated with those, you could use that to arrive at, you know, where you think an appropriate range could be in correlation to what you think, you know, either you personally or constituents might be willing to support. Does that, does that kind of help frame that a little bit?
Yeah, so I guess instead of, instead of coming up with what the city needs and then figuring out how to pay for it, how much it would cost, you're saying, let's start with the cost and figure out what services and or personnel we can bring on. If that makes sense.
Gabriel, or Julia?
It would be nice if you can add how much is the portion of the city that we pay, you know, annually, you know, our own portion.
So this, I'm sorry, this amount is just the city portion of the tax bill?
No, I know, but what we are currently paying now, you know what I mean, in average, the total? And then we can mentally, we say we divide that amount, we suppose that the average home pay, I don't know, $2,500 a year, our portion.
Yep.
I can divide it by 12 and I have an idea how much I'm paying per month for all these services that I am getting right now from the city. There's also one, it's going to be, it's another visual and another metric that is going to be easy to explain the resident, you know, compared to this increase. What is the percentage, you know what I mean?
And those are all great things that I'm hoping Mueller can help us with too, right? That, that kind of visualization, I think spreadsheets, which is why you see a lot of spreadsheets for me, but I know that's not what everybody thinks. So they'll be able to really help us get those infographics and the graphs and get our message a lot clearer.
So can I make another comment?
Sure. Live it up.
Okay. No, so the other comment that I want to make is that I, I agree with you, Jay, that we shouldn't go to a referendum for a million dollar, you know, because it's going to cost a lot of money for us to do all this work. And no, it's not only the funding or the money, it's also, it's going to be a very difficult conversation to have with the residents, you know, it's, you know, some of us, we are going to get some, you know, not very pleasant conversation to have. So it's, it's going to be also, it's going to take a lot of our, I would say, mental, you know, and also can affect us, you know, pushing this because it's a very difficult topic. But I think if we are, as a council, we are on the same page and we, we think that this is something that is going to make our city grow more sustainable in the future. You know, it's something that we can, you know, work together as a team. I think everyone can, you know, have their own, you know, what it should be, 3 million or 4 million, you can do some of the calculation about if we, you know, how many position we need to, you know, those 3 million can, can, can cover. Because you know, if we have a 3 million and we only use a $3 million for a front position on average of $150,000, we have only 20 position, you know what I mean? But if, we remember that we need to allocate some of the money for transit. So this is where we can determine how we're going to feel comfortable, you know, the allocation. So the other thing I want to mention is that we got the new number for the population for the city and we are 34,000 people in the city. So compared to 2020, we have almost 2,000 increase, you know? So, so we are, we are, you know, we're growing. We have a lot to, I agree with you that we need, housing is, is a priority for me in my budget, you will see it. But I think we need to increase the inventory of housing in the city and this is why, you know, you know, but that one is going to be, we're going to continue to grow and grow, bring, we need more resources, you know what I mean? So, so I think we are in a road cross now that we need to determine if we want to continue to grow or we want to stop this momentum.
Gabrielle?
I have a few things. The first is in terms of the communications, like something I've been thinking about trying to develop myself for a while was just helping people understand what their full tax bill, how that breaks down to the city and then how that breaks down to the different services that they receive. Because that, based on that chart that you make during the budget season of like, here's an average household, here much, here's how much they pay for parks, here's how much they pay for the library, that specificity of like what you're paying for, I think is really helpful and like kind of makes it seem like, oh, this is kind of a good deal we're getting for, for, for what we're paying. But I also think that people don't necessarily think about how much of their tax bill is the city portion and that they, when they see a rise in tax bill, they might attribute it to the city even if the city portion is going down, which is, or is stagnant versus an increase in schools and or the county. So that communication about the history of the taxes, I think matters and like really having people understand how much they've been paying and what they're getting for that. And then also like even seeing like, oh, this is the portion that's been going down consistently, certain portions of the city budget. And it's like, well, do you want money to go to this part of the budget? Like let people, that granular decision-making, I think it can help. Obviously, that's a very complex communications challenge, but I just think that there's like a real deficit in people understanding actually what they're paying for and how much they're paying to the city. And then on top of that, I don't think people understand, I mean, I barely understand levy limits and, and why referendum are necessary. I know we all vote on school referendum and I don't think people really even know why. And so I don't know how much that is part of the communications one and maybe that's not important, but the fact that we are in a position where we've been in a good position, right? We haven't had to cut services, but we're at this threshold where we're going to start hitting a point where we're going to have to. And like the reality that other communities are facing, we haven't, our residents haven't felt the pain of that yet, which is great, but also like in terms of communicating a referendum, like the understanding that, that this could, this is what it's going to look like and this is what it's going to look like for other communities. And we're trying to stave that off by doing this on the front end rather than letting us feel the pain and then trying to fix it on the back end. So anyway, I just wanted to, those are thoughts about the communication. I think it's a challenge and I think that that is part of the story that has to be told. I'm also interested in learning, I don't know if there is any sort of chart about this, but like what referendums have succeeded recently with communities? Like what is their total budget? What was the referendum amount? Did it succeed? What was the pitch? Was it only, you know, public safety or was it broader? Just knowing what actually has worked recently, I think is valuable information. Maybe Mueller would, would help us with that too. That's all the things about the referendum that I wanted to say. And then the third thing, I guess, is that I don't want us to take the other fees off the table in terms of paying for the budget. So I don't know if we want to talk about impact fees for the police station, potentially a wheel tax. I don't know what that is, but I just don't think we should take that off the table completely because that does, I think, have a, have a, you know, obviously an annual impact.
Jay, can I?
Yeah.
So, so I agree with you, Gabrielle. I think maybe we need to move forward with referendum and if referendum fail, you know, because the resident are going to decide it, yes or no, you know? So what we are doing is moving this forward so the resident can decide, you know? This is a yes to referendum means that we are asking the resident to decide, you know what I mean? So, and eventually if, if the referendum fail, we need to go, for sure, we will need to look at tax bill and other fee for sure because we will need the money. We need the, you know, all, we need to, or this body will need to come together and decide what are the service we are going to cut. Because that one is going to be what happened.
If I may?
Yeah.
That's exactly what this options assessment is that Mueller will help us with. So rather than just going to the public and say, hey, we want to do a referendum, this is what we want to ask for, we want to make sure they know that we've done this journey and we want to take them on this journey with us. So part of this phase 1B options assessment is we'll put all these things that we've been talking about out to the public via survey. And we'll say, these are the things we're talking about. What are you interested in, right? Are you, do you prefer a wheel tax over a referendum? Do you prefer all these other different things? And that options assessment is a key part of, of that, that help that they'll provide us.
So I, I do, we are going to need to have multiple more meetings about this. So in September, so your, your intention is to have a resolution to the council on the 12th, right?
If I can work through contracts with them. So I haven't gotten the contract, so I don't know how different it is versus what the city is willing to accept, but that would be my goal.
Would, would they be interested in coming to the committee of the whole meeting on the 27th of September to just start walking through some of this process? Because I, you know, I, I realize that it's, that, that some members of the council and the mayor may be feeling some trepidation, but we also need to, you know, the sooner we come to, to a conclusion as to what we feel the needs are, the sooner we'll be able to start reaching out to the public. When, when the, and I, I completely agree with you, we need to, in the materials that we send out to the residents, we need to talk about levy limits and why the city is at this crossroads. They need to understand why the actions of the legislature have created a problem that we can't get around without, without doing this. And I remember when we, when we did the library referendum, there was a, there was a four-page, it was, you know, it was regular, it's eight and a half by seven, or 11 by 17 that was folded in half. It was four pages about why the city needed the library and why it needed to cost this much and how that was all going to happen. And at the time that was done by, I think that was paid for by the, well, you wouldn't know because you weren't here. At the, at the time that was paid for by the friends. So it wasn't paid for by, by the city of Pittsburgh. But this is something that we're going to have to be actively involved in and we may have to do, we may need to do more than one mailing. So what I'd, what I'd like to, on the September committee of the whole agenda, we've got the water and well system thing. I don't imagine that's going to take more than a half an hour, but I don't know. And that's the only thing we have, right? Besides?
I have to double check what all we have.
Yeah, because we took off the, the term limits thing.
Yeah.
And the project updates have happened tonight and last night. And this was all stuff that we did tonight. So.
You are correct.
So I think the only thing we're going to have is the water and well system. So if they can, if, if you can bring up the possibility of having them come to that meeting and, you know, I've sent out a couple of emails asking you guys to send information in about what the things are that are priorities and we're, you know, this is the time where we need to do it. So please send those emails to Chad so he can start assembling some stuff. We can start getting some more precise pricing for what, you know, what the specific positions are going to cost. And then we'll at least have a number that we can, we can hash through. And it may end up being like a buffet where we go through, you know, 20 different ideas and pick, you know, 15 of them. I don't know. I don't know how it's going to go, but I do think we need to start getting really serious about this and focused on it because, because we're, you know, right now, if we're going to go to referendum in September, we're a year away. And so the time, time is, time is running out. And that's, you know, that's why I was kind of pressing the police department last night, Jim, about what it's going to take to keep staff. Because if we need to allocate more resources to the police department, then this is the time to do it. We need to get something in. We need to get some numbers. We need to have, and you know, we just, don't just want to stick a number out there and say, hey, we need $500,000 for the police department. We need to tell the voters why we need $500,000. If, and I'm just pulling that number out of the air, so Dave.
What would be, what, what's a referendum? Is it a special, is this, is a special election? You know, are we doing it during, say, a primary? I'm hoping it's combined with something else because I don't, I don't like these things where it's just, you know, a school referendum is the only thing on the, on the ballot, you know? So.
Absolutely. So under statute, we are only allowed to do it at certain elections. They expanded that recently. So my thought is, and what we kind of talked about, is doing an August 2024 ballot, so that traditional ballot. If we do it in April, that feels a little too soon.
Yeah.
February feels very too soon.
August would be a primary.
Right. And then if we wait till November of next year, at that point, the budget process is really far down.
Understood.
So I think August is kind of that sweet spot where we'll, it's yes, part of a regular election. I agree, we don't want to have an election just for this, but also at a time that works well for our budget process.
Thank you. Sorry, Dan.
No, that's, that's good to clarify. I thought the primary was September. It's August?
It's August.
Okay. So we have less than a year. So, so yeah, I would encourage all of you to just put some, put some time into thinking about this. Get your email to Chad telling him what you think and we'll get it all put together and hopefully have broader discussion about it on the 27th. Any other comments on this? Bill?
So for asking for a referendum. So for asking for a referendum, does this thing, is it like indexed to inflation or anything, or are we asking for, you know, an extra $2 million in 2024 dollars in perpetuity?
So it is a one-time adjustment. So we would be asking, for example, for $2 million in the 2025 budget, and then that's built into our base. So the future net new construction adjustments that we get would be included, so you get that $2 million inflated by net new construction, but you can't do like a certain indexed amount each year outside of that.
Any other questions, comments?
One thing I will just add, I was just looking up the date for the August election and the August 2024 fall primary is August 13th.
We got 50 weeks. All right. Well, thanks, Misty, for coming for that information.
Of course.
Any other? The next committee of the whole meeting, as we've been talking about, is on the 27th, where we will talk about this and wells. So with that, we could use a motion to get out of here.
So moved. A motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
It was Randy.
Randy.
Oh. It was a male voice that came from down there. All in favor?
Aye.
And he posed, motion carries. Good night.
I feel like Rodney Dangerfield.